Welcome to this forum. It's provided by the Lansing League of Women Voters and the Allen Neighborhood Center. The forum features the candidates running for the Lansing City Council at-large in the general election on November 4th, 2025. This forum is being recorded and will be freely available for viewing on the League and the Allen Neighborhood Center websites within a few days. I am Joanne Winkelman, the Vice President of Voter Services for the Lansing Area League. The Lansing area includes Ingham, Eaton, and Clinton Counties. The League is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. A key part of the League's mission relates to voter services. We provide candidate forums like tonight, voter registration drives. We also provide voter guides online at vote411.org. And these ladies have already responded to that, and it is live right now. For statewide elections, we also provide printed voter guides that are freely available in the Lansing area. All the candidates have responded to questions on Vote 411. To access their response, just type in Vote 411, and then you put in your address, and you'll see what's on your ballot, and that includes all the proposals also. Next is Ethan Schmidt, and he's representing the Allen Neighborhood Center, and he will say a few words.
Thank you so much, everyone, for being here. My name is Ethan Schmidt, and my job is to run the volunteer work and the communication work here at Allen Neighborhood Center. As Allen Neighborhood Center, we are here to support the East Side neighborhood of Lansing, making sure that our residents have access to a lot of resources, including food pantry, a farmer's market, youth programs, an outreach office, a community program, a vegetarian program, and something I'm almost certainly going to forget because there's so many different options. One of our main efforts, one of our main issues, is to ensure that our residents and our neighbors remain informed about the issues and informed about what's happening in the community. And while low government is often one of the least thought-about issues, it is one of these issues that has the biggest effect on the lives of citizens every day. So it is really, I'm really grateful for everyone who came out here to look at the candidates, to get information on the voter platform, and to make sure that you're going into this election informed and ready to support the East Side, the East Side neighborhood. So thank you again for being here, and you speak with the voters for all their work in setting this up, and I'm really looking forward to hearing from the candidates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ethan. Our moderator this evening is Dorothy Engelman, a member of the League of Women Voters of the Lansing area. Dorothy?
Thank you, Joanne, and thank you all for being here. The League provides an opportunity for candidates to express their views related to their candidacy. Statements expressed by the candidates are not endorsed nor opposed by the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters does not certify any accuracy of the candidates' responses, and you're encouraged to fact-check. There are four candidates on the ballot for the Lansing City Council at-large. Two will be elected to serve four-year terms, a four-year term. The candidates are Jeremy Garza, Claire Martinez, Julie Vandenboom, and a write-in candidate, Allison Pelear. Jeremy Garza is not able to be with us this evening. The Lansing City Council is the legislative and policy body for the city government. It sets policies, approves budgets, determines tax rates, and adopts ordinances and resolutions to govern the city. The City Council also confirms citizen volunteers to a number of boards and advisory roles. Questions for the candidates have been collected in advance through the Allen Neighborhood Center. Additional questions can be submitted on mail cards and handed to a League volunteer, who will then bring them to the screeners. The screeners will consider the questions, consider those previously submitted by the center, and may combine questions or edit them for clarity. If you have a question, just raise your hand, and we have a couple volunteers who will pick those up for you. Each candidate will have a minute and a half for an opening statement, two minutes to answer each question, and one minute for a closing statement. The candidates are reminded that they are to restrict their answers to the position on the question asked, and not to make any personal remarks about any other candidate. Now, for your role, we request that the audience and candidates turn off their cellphones as far as ringers are concerned, and you may not record the forum. We're doing that for you, and so it'll be available on our YouTube channel. We'd also like, if you're moving around, to please refrain from walking in the center aisle, because you'll end up on the video, and we can't edit that out. So if you need to go back and forth on the room, please go behind the video camera. We also request that the audience refrain from any vocal reactions for or against any candidate or statement made by the candidate. The audience is requested to remain silent during the forum and to maintain an oasis of neutrality, and to applaud only at the end when the moderator has announced that the forum is over. Candidates are seated by a random drawing, and will begin with opening statements by the candidates, and then all questions will be rotated among the candidates, and the closing statement will be given in the reverse order from the opening statements. And we will now begin with an opening statement by Julie, and she has a minute and a half.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters and to Allen Neighborhood Center for putting this event together. I think it's very important that we have an opportunity as candidates to reach as many of Lansing's residents as we can, and this is one of the ways that lets us do that. And thank you for being here as well. I'm kind of disappointed that the rest of the candidates are not here. I'm Julie Vandenboom. I am a longtime Lansing resident, graduated from Waverly High School in 1992, went to Michigan State for my bachelor's and my master's. I've lived in the city for about 25 years now. My son graduated from Lansing Eastern in 2019. Go Quakers! He was the last graduating class in that original building, which has kind of been important, I think, in this past couple of months. What differentiates me from the other candidates? I am not taking any money from corporate PACs. I am not taking any money from developers. I'm a complete grassroots candidate. It's important to me that the residents of Lansing are represented on City Council. The developers have done a lot of good things for our city, but they've got enough seats at the table already, in my opinion. I have worked at the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services for 16 years. I'm a program reengineering specialist, so I get to take things apart and put them back together again so they're more equitable and...
Thank you very much. And we'll move on to, but you will find that I will cut you off when the time is up. So I apologize for speaking over you.
No, that's fine.
So Claire, you have a minute and a half.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Clara Martinez. I am a teacher at Everett High School in the Lansing School District. I've been there for nine years, and I was inspired to run primarily because of my students. So I teach ninth through 12th grade, and over the course of my time at Everett, I've seen the impacts of the different policies that the city puts in place, right, directly on their lives. So whatever's outside of the classroom finds its way inside of the classroom, whether it's, you know, gun violence or issues in the neighborhood, or feeling like they belong in their neighborhood, to potholes, right? So they were the ones that inspired me to run, to make a better future for us and for them. So my priorities are having opportunities for them after they graduate high school, so we retain them and keep them here to have a prosperous life, reliable city services, and safe and vibrant neighborhoods where we feel like we can all belong. So I hope to earn your vote.
Thank you very much. First question goes to Claire, because we had Julie as her first statement. So first question goes to Claire. And the question, Claire, is, why do you want to serve on the City Council? Please describe your engagement with the city of Lansing. Be specific about any volunteer activities, public service committees, commissions, and/or attendance at council meetings. And you have two minutes.
Thank you. So I want to serve on Lansing City Council. As I just stated, I was inspired by my students to run, but it goes all the way back to my service as an Americor Vista, where I saw the power and the might and the amazing impact that people can have that serve on the City Council, right? So I serve on the City of Lansing's Art and Culture Commission. I'm also, you know, from my Vista experience, aware of different community-based organizations that have a profound impact on how our city can thrive and function and move forward. But yeah, those are my two primary methods of service.
Thank you. Julie, you have two minutes.
Could you just give me the bullet points of the question again, please?
Sure. Why do you want to serve on the City Council? Please describe your engagement with the city of Lansing, being specific about any volunteer activities, public service on committees or commissions, and/or attendance at council meetings.
Thank you. Why I want to serve on Lansing City Council? Lansing is a vibrant city. Lansing is a place that I am delighted to call my home, and at the same time, I recognize that we are leaving some of our neighbors behind. We have got some significant crises that are occurring in the city, I would say particularly around affordable housing. It is an emergency. We have unhoused neighbors that are getting their homes destroyed by bulldozers because the city does not know what to do. And so that is the heart of why I'm running. We need a city government that treats all of our neighbors with compassion and with empathy. As for engagement, I was appointed by Mayor Andy Shore to the Board of the Capital Area District Libraries about a year ago. I've enjoyed that very much. I'm on the board of an organization called A Place for Us, which is a startup nonprofit that is working to find solutions for our unhoused LGBTQ neighbors. I have been a steering member of the Rent Is Too Damn High Tenants Union. I am on the board of Friends of Bancroft Park as well, and I'm a member of the East Side Neighborhood Organization. In addition to that, I am a dedicated East Sider. I love this part of the city. The whole city I love, but the East Side is, it's where I feel most comfortable and very happy always to be here.
Thank you. And because we only have two candidates, you get to go first on the next one, Julie. So it's really going to be, you're going to do two back-to-back, you'll just have a different question.
Okay.
So your question, that you get to go first on this time, is, what are your thoughts on the charter revision that will be on the November ballot? And you have two minutes.
So I think that there's some things in the proposed charter revision that are a good step. I really like the changes to allowing folks that have had a felony in the past 20 years, I think they should be allowed to serve in the community. So that language being updated to match what's in the state constitution, I think, is appropriate. I like the addition of the fifth ward, but I would rather see nine wards and no at-large. And I know that's weird, that I'm running for at-large, and I don't think we should have at-large seats. I fully embrace that that's an ironic thing to have happen, but we need to work within the constraints of what we have available to us today. And I think if we had fewer at-large council folks, I mean, it is brutal running for an at-large seat. You have to raise a ton of money, you have to cover the whole city. If we had nine wards and no at-large, you would have a lot more folks that would be able to afford to run. It's a significant barrier to come up with the money to run. I also don't like, in the charter, this idea that we would be replacing the entire council and the mayor and the clerk at the same time, rather than staggering this every two years. I understand it's a cost savings, but I think you're going to lose institutional knowledge, you're going to lose continuity, and I think that's a very poor decision. So I am going to be a no vote. I would really love to see the Charter Commission take another try, because I know that they can do, I know they can do a little bit more than what they did.
Thank you. Same question, Claire.
Yeah, so I am in agreement with Julie. We're in the same consensus of adding the fifth ward. I think that's really important and a strong aspect to have for our city, right, to have more ward representation from different neighborhoods. I'm going to be a pro-vote on the charter, and a big aspect of that is my conversations and some of the time I've been able to spend speaking to people across the city, but also to former Mayor Hollister, who reminds me constantly, you're lucky if you get 50% of what you want. You should celebrate that as a big win. But I think that the Charter Commission has worked extremely hard over their tenure, and they've done a lot of research, and I feel like they put their best foot forward. They found some commonalities, they were able to bring people's opposing voices together and still have some consensus and some solutions. So I'm going to be a pro-vote, and hopefully we can take a step forward with what we have been able to garner from that process.
Thank you. And now you get to be first on the next question, Claire. So it is really two parts. What is your position on the recent demolition of the tent camps that were occupied by the unhoused in Lansing, and what can be done in the future to address low-income housing in the area?
Yeah, that's a great question. So as a social worker, I have my master's in social work and macro-social work, so looking at community systems, different ways to organize and leadership. I think prioritizing people's dignity and autonomy and their own sense of respect and belonging in their community is the utmost of importance, right? I think being unhoused, experiencing homelessness, is something that I can only imagine is overwhelming and all-consuming. So I'm going to, you know, turn to listen to those that work in supporting those that are unhoused on a daily basis, those that are experts in that field, those that tend to the care of those people first and foremost. I think it's a multifaceted thing. I think we need short-term solutions and long-term solutions. Short-term solutions being that we need housing that people can enter immediately for a temporary time, right, whatever that is. And then long-term is building more housing that is safe, that is dignified, that is healthy, and that will last for future generations to come. So I think it's a multifaceted piece, but as a social worker, I'll be looking to those that serve, those that are unhoused on a daily basis, to move us forward and ensure that those that are experiencing homelessness are treated with dignity and respect.
Thank you. Julie, same question, two minutes.
I think what the city has done at the encampment, the Fallen Angels encampment up at Dietrich Park, is inhumane and disgusting. I hate that I live in a city that thinks it's okay to treat people the way that those people are being treated. Those are our neighbors. They've built a community, and the only place that they were able to build a community. And rather than find a place for them, the city has multiple times, this isn't the first time an encampment has been chased away or roused, and it's wrong to treat other human beings in that way. I agree with Clara that we do need to talk to the experts. I would also go a step further and say, we need to be talking to the people that have experienced homelessness and who are currently experiencing homelessness. They will tell you what they need. They will tell you what it is that they need. I've done work up at Dietrich Park. I've been called in for propane explosions. It's heartbreaking that people in the greatest country in the world have to live like that, but they have nowhere else to live, and we need to do better. Some solutions, there's not an easy fix. There's not going to be an easy fix. It's going to be five or six or 15 or 20 different solutions that all have to come into play at the same time. One thing that I think the council has recently done that is going to be a bit of a step forward is Joan Nelson's ideas that she championed around shared-use housing. We need gentle densification. We need to be able to do incremental development, take the infrastructure that's already in place, let people do mother-in-law apartments, let people do ADUs, let people do rooming houses. That's the only way we're going to get through this emergency that we're in.
Thank you. And you're first on this question, Julie. Given recent events, and especially the hate crime in Old Town, how would you work to ensure Lansing remains a safe and inclusive place for all? Additionally, if you had been on the City Council, what would have been your response to the Old Town incident?
This is difficult for me, because I have been on the receiving end of a threat related to my candidacy that threatened my life, and did not really feel completely satisfied with the response I got from law enforcement. I think what we need to do, it's not always about enforcement, right? It's about having a city where people are valued for what they bring to the table, for their unique qualities. And you're always going to have people that are going to be assholes, and I'm sorry if you have to bleep that, Donna. We're always going to have people that don't play by the rules and that are going to be rude, and I think we just need to stand up for each other. We protect each other. If I had been on City Council when that happened, I would have spoken out, and I think that we need leadership that's going to speak out against not only those types of hate crimes, but also we need leadership that's going to speak out against what's happening in this country right now. And I haven't heard much from City Council, I haven't heard much from the mayor, that we are sliding into a fascist government, and we need to, we need to speak up. We need to speak up.
Two minutes, Claire.
Thank you. So as a social worker, I think the most important thing that we can do, again, is to listen to those that are experiencing on the receiving end of whatever these actions are, whether it's in Old Town or what has happened, you know, outside the avenue, things like that. And I think Julie and I are in agreement that those that experience these things are, you know, the experts within their own lived identity and what is going on for them in the world and how they're being treated. And so I'm going to turn to them to say, how can we garner, you know, the strength of the city, the power of the city, to ensure that not only you feel safe, but on what terms and what conditions does that look like, right? I'm not in a place to decide the specificity of that. What are those demands? What are those proposed solutions? What does that look like? Let's have a conversation and put that out on the table. I think it's also important to acknowledge and empower those folks that are willing to stand up to be a voice of the LGBTQ+ community and whichever community. As a Latina, with, you know, some of the incidences going on in this country with ICE, I think it's really important that, no matter how we identify, in some way, shape, or form, we probably all feel unsafe. And so I think the best thing that we can do is listen, ensure that others are the experts of their own experience, and then say, what would make you feel included? What would make you feel empowered to feel safe in this community? And what policies can we put in place to do that? And how can we empower you to lead us there?
Thank you. Next question, and again, you start with this one, Claire. What are your views on red-tagged properties? Please explain your strategy for addressing those properties.
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, I think that it's a matter of identifying when someone gets a red tag, you know, who is a good actor and who is a bad actor? And what I mean by that is, you know, who is someone that is not able to take care of their home, or for whatever reason, they're in a financial situation where they're unable to, you know, make certain repairs to their home? And maybe they just need some support, right? Maybe they just need some help and some resources versus, you know, a landlord who is being negligent and not taking care of their properties, and then therefore not taking care of the neighbors that live within those properties, right? So we want to empower and uplift those that need our support and need our help, and then we also need to hold those accountable that are just essentially neglecting our residents and neglecting the properties, because that affects the entire city and how we are able to live here in a dignified manner.
Thank you. Julie?
I would like to see the city of Lansing draw some distinction between your mom-and-pop landlord, who might own a house or two in their own neighborhood, and these folks that own tons of houses, and they might not live in the city, they might not live in the state, they might not live in the country. I think we need to incentivize folks to be good landlords in their own neighborhoods, because that's going to improve housing stock, that's going to help us just have more properties for people to live in. I think that the city has, we know part of the issue with the red-tagged properties is that there's code compliance, does not have enough folks that are working right now, and that's an issue that I hear from a lot of folks in all areas of city government, that there's so many positions that are empty. I think that's part of what the solution is going to need to be. I'd also like to think about, and I don't know exactly how it would work in Michigan, I don't know if the state laws are going to allow it or not, but if you look at like what they did in Pittsburgh 20-ish years ago with like, it's a land value tax or a land use tax, where if you have houses that are sitting empty, or if you have a property that's sitting empty, and it just continues to sit and sit and sit, when we're in a situation where we have people that don't have anywhere to live, maybe you need to pay a fine or a fee. Maybe we need to incentivize those folks to do something with the properties rather than sitting on them and hoping that they gain in value. A lot of times, they sit and sit until they become a red-tagged property.
Thank you. Next question is, what types of development within the city are you likely to support? Please include what impact you believe this type of development will have on Lansing finances and/or the affordability of housing. Julie, you're first on this.
Sure. I think I alluded to this a little bit earlier, the idea of gentle densification and incremental development. So if folks are familiar with Charles Marone and the Strong Towns books that he's written, I think there's three or four of them. The original one is called Strong Towns. We talk about this idea where housing can be, you want things that are going to be able to be modifiable. So you might start with just a rectangle, and as you decide, you know, you're going to have kids, you want to build another, what's the word? An addendum? It's not an addendum.
In addition?
Thank you, in addition. What a word to forget. Oh my God. So that's one of the ideas. What I, I am not anti-development, no matter what phone calls you might have received about me said. I do believe that we need to hold developers accountable in Lansing. A lot of times, we're giving away tax deals, and we never make sure that the value we're supposed to be getting from those investments is actually happening. Are we really going to get X number of jobs when this developer comes in? How many people are going to come in and live within the city of Lansing and pay income taxes once they're in that housing? So I think we need some community benefit agreements, we need to make sure that we are getting our money's worth when we give away tax dollars to developers.
Thank you. Same question, Claire.
Thank you. So I think that we need a variety of different kinds of development and housing. I think we need a variety in size and location and different kinds of experiences for people to have, right? Like, I have this cute little studio apartment on the edge of the East Side, some exposed brick, and I can feel like I'm in a big giant metropolis, but I walk out and I'm in adorable Lansing, and I love it. And I'm right across from Babes, and it's the best. And so I think we're, we need to provide housing that has a variety of different experiences that people might want to have, right? I think another piece of that is anything from mixed use to like different kinds of yard sizes, et cetera. I see myself and Julie in agreement on gentle densification. I think in some differences, I would have some cautious optimism with regard to tax incentives. I think that that's something like on a case-by-case basis you could consider, and I think it's okay to be protective of the city and, as stated, you know, hold developers accountable. But we also need to move forward into the future, right, and not necessarily automatically shun or push away certain kinds of development. And then as a union member myself, I'm always going to prioritize development that hires union workers. That's a huge priority for me.
Thank you. Next question. Malcolm X was a civil rights icon who spent his schooling years in Lansing. There's a street and a sign referencing Malcolm X, but do you feel there should be more given to the legacy of the man? If so, how do you think Lansing should honor the history of Malcolm X? If so, how do you think Lansing should honor the history of Malcolm X?
That's a great question. You know, I think about not just Malcolm X, I think about Cesar Chavez, right? But I also just think about the Titans and the leaders that shape our community and those neighbors that had like a really great deep impact because of those people being their neighbors and in their neighborhood. I would seek to hear more from those that maybe have a historical connection to where he was and maybe speak more from the perspective of the Black community and what they want to see, right? I think that as a, not only icon in Lansing, but like an international icon, I think we could go above and beyond, right? And I think for my students to know that they're growing up in the same neighborhoods as people that really changed and pushed the world forward, I think that I would be completely open to going as big as we want to go.
Julie?
I'm in full support of something honoring Malcolm X. And I think that we've already got Southwest Action Group, Olivia Vaden and some of the folks down there have started talking about how to build something that honors Malcolm X as they redevelop the school that he went to down in the southwest side of Lansing. I think that, yes, you want this to be done, you want this work to be done by the community down there near where he went to school. And I think also his family, he still has family members that are alive. And I think they need to be part of any decision-making about what the remembrance is going to be here in Lansing.
Thank you. Next question, and again, you get to start, Julie. What role do you believe city council can play in creating a diverse, vibrant community? Please consider diversity in a broad sense, for example, that may include youth, seniors, LGBTQ, and immigrants.
I think it's important for city council to understand that there's not ever going to be one individual that speaks for an entire community. I think that we need to do a better job with soliciting input from communities when we go forward with big projects within the city. I'm thinking about, oh, over on MLK, they were going to, I don't even remember at this point what they were going to do, the changes they were going to make to the road there. And it feels like a lot of times, and the changes that we just made on Michigan Avenue, there was input that was taken from various communities. And it doesn't really seem like that input made it all the way to the people that designed. So I think honestly, really listening to communities. Don't count on people to have to come in to a city council meeting, go through a metal detector, have to leave your knitting outside because you have scissors in it. I think meeting people where they are, going into the communities and getting that input, and then really doing something with that input.
Thank you. Claire?
Yeah, I think it's about honoring and witnessing those that are already here, right? And celebrating our differences, but also finding our points of connection to each other as well, right? Because as humans, we all have something that we share that we want to bring together in our community. So I think that listening to the needs of a variety of different community members is really important and then empowering them to have leadership roles. Obviously, one person cannot be the voice for an entire community, right? But you can have a variety of leaders from different communities be the voices and steer wherever we're going to go next. So I think that in all of that, the shortened version of this answer is to listen. I have to hold this again.
Thank you. I'd also like to remind the audience, if you have questions, I'm getting down in my pile. If you have questions that you would like to ask the candidates, please write it on a card and one of our volunteers will pick that up. So next question, and this is from the audience. What is the most pressing issue facing the Lansing, spacing Lansing that could tangibly, and that was underlined, be solved by the power of the council? And how would you work to solve that?
So I think from my perspective as a teacher, and one of the reasons that I decided to run is seeing the incredible need of our students, not only feeling like they belong, but feeling that they have a path here after high school. Because if they stay here after high school, they settle down, right? They buy property, they contribute to the tax base, they become part of our city, and that continues to grow, right? So I think that the most tangible thing that we can do is something that former Mayor Hollister had, which is to bring back a youth advisory council. In the school district, they have, you know, a junior board, a junior school board. And so I think that giving a platform and agency to our young folks to help shape what our city is going to look like over the next 25, 50, 75, 100 years, to me, is one of the most pressing and also tangible things because our kids see solutions a lot more clearly than sometimes we do, right?
Thank you. Julie?
I think a very tangible and sadly overdue solution that the city could implement would be hiring an ADA coordinator, the Americans with Disabilities Act coordinator, and publishing an ADA transition plan. We've had 35 years to do that and we haven't done it yet. And it is refreshing to see, you know, on Michigan Avenue, some of the changes that we did get there are ADA compliant as far as the crosswalks go. But I have heard from a lot of people about how terrible the sidewalks are, how terrible some of the city buildings are, like people in wheelchairs can't get in. And honestly, 50% of us are going to be disabled either permanently or temporarily at some point in our lives. And we need to, we need to be better. We need to be better about housing that's accessible here in Lansing, and we need to be better with just the infrastructure in general.
Thank you. Next question. Where do you think the new 50 mod pods that were the mini houses that have been purchased by the city, where should they be located and why?
I don't know. I don't know. And I'm not the kind of person that's going to bullshit an answer if I don't know. I think we need to do research. I think we should consider whether or not we even need those mod pods. I think we bought them because Calum Zoo couldn't figure out what to do with them. It seems to me like the city bought those without a plan for what to do with them. And that seems short-sighted. And I look forward to getting people together that can figure out where they would belong, but I don't know the answer right offhand.
So Julie and I are in agreement that I also don't know where we should put the pods. I think that that is a really kind of loaded and complex question, right? And everyone's going to have a different answer to that. And so again, I think that we go back to the experts, not just those that are experiencing homelessness, but those that serve our community of unhoused people, right? That are having to navigate what that's going to be like to be in the pods, where would they like them to be? I mean, where do we begin that conversation? I think there's a variety of entry points. And so I think it's going to be a process. And I think all we can do as participants in the community, but also those on council, is being open to a variety of different options.
This is another audience question. Do you support a wealth tax and/or a corporate tax? Why or why not? And how would you use that money if you do support it? And Claire, you're first.
So I think that when it comes to taxes, what I'm hearing a lot at the doors separately from a wealth or corporate tax is just that our property taxes are so high. So I guess I would need to learn a little bit more about policy and setting for who would be receiving a wealth tax or a corporate tax? What does that look like? What is that percentage? And then how is that going to, you know, intersect with maybe those that are also having to pay higher taxes because they live in the city? And at what point do we feel like our city services are really matching whatever taxes we're putting on people? That's really a kind of a complicated answer, I know. But I think it's important to think about if we're asking folks to pay more, whether they have that money or not. Also, are we living up to our exemplary city services and providing everyone with equitable and safe opportunities and services from our municipality?
Julie?
What I would really like to see is something that is currently precluded in state law, which would be some kind of a graduated income tax in Lansing. So rather than paying your flat 1% of your income, I would like to see a change to state law that would allow us to do something more like the federal tax brackets where if you are lucky enough to be making more money, you're going to be taxed a little bit higher on incrementally as, you know, the more you make, it's going to be a little bit more at that point. What would I do with the money? I mean, so much that we could do. I would love to see, I had a phone call, I was driving yesterday for work, had a phone call from a gentleman who had an idea for housing, like studio apartment housing that could be done below market rate, like $300 a month. If we could, if we had a lot of money that we could build something like that and try out several different models of housing for low-income folks, pilot some of those, figure out what works best, and just go for it.
Thank you. And you get this one first. How do you plan to work with neighborhoods and neighborhood groups if you're elected to the council? And what experience, if any, have you had doing so?
I love going to neighborhood groups. I can't tell you how many parks and how many neighborhoods I cleaned up this spring, everywhere from the east side to Colonial Village, down to Churchill Downs. I love showing up at neighborhood meetings. If it's my neighborhood, if it's somebody else's neighborhood, I want to hear what's going on. And I think that's, again, this idea of going to meet people where they are. I think that that is the most important thing that we can be doing as an elected official. And that's, I would just keep doing what I'm doing now, but maybe even a little more of it.
Thank you. Claire?
Thank you. So when I served as an AmeriCorps Vista, it was really about empowering people block by block with the grant opportunities at the time that we had through an organization called Cities of Service. And so I learned a lot about the traditionally organized neighborhood organizations across the city, to just little wine groups that gather on, you know, people's back patios or wherever they're hanging out. And so I think to the point of going where people are, that could look different, right? Block by block. Some of my students, they learn and they make dances just based on the kids in their neighborhood, and they all get together and they make dances in somebody's driveway. You know, who's to say that that's not a neighborhood group as well, right? So I think it's about engaging with the more traditionally organized neighborhood associations and organizations as well as like, you know, the, who does the Dress Like a Pirate Day, right? And who organizes that? And they're just as much an engaged neighborhood leader as someone else, right, with the title. So I think it's about listening, seeking to understand, and then saying, what is your solution to the problem? And how can we build that solution together? It's not just on me and it's not just on you, right? It's that touch point where we come together to find a solution to our shared values and interests and problems together.
Thank you. Do you have any plans, and this has been touched on a little bit, do you have any plans to involve more of the youth in politics and voting? And you get to start with that one, Claire.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, Julie and I are in agreement on, you know, the state of our democracy, I guess you could say, the state of our country. And to me, a big piece of moving us forward to a place where we are able to have more conversations like we are tonight, right, is about empowering youth to participate in the democratic process, right? Like I have been able to work with students in the capacity of student council, right? Anything from like setting an agenda to taking some meeting minutes and sharing, you know, brainstorms and having, you know, what are we going to plan for this fall dance, et cetera, to registering to vote. And so I think that that is absolutely a passion of mine. I don't have specifics in terms of I want to do this, this, and this, but as a general thing, yes, I absolutely want to do that. And I'm open to honestly hearing again what the kids want to do because they have a lot of opinions of their own and a lot of solutions of their own. So wherever they're able to engage, I'm happy to connect them to those resources.
Julie?
I've been pleasantly surprised by the amount of young people that have come out to volunteer with my campaign. And it has humbled me and it underscores for me that young people do want to be involved. And sometimes they just aren't able to because of other things that are getting in the way. I think that we should be striving to increase youth voters. I don't know what kind of walk lists Clara's working off of, but if I'm going to be hitting doors, it's almost always older people because older people are the ones that are voting. And I would really, really love to see younger people get more involved. I think some type of a youth council is a great idea. I think, I mean, League of Women Voters does youth outreach, I think. I've seen something before, I believe, in the schools. So that's another avenue that I think we could move forward with. But it's very important, there's a lot of young people that seem disenfranchised, that don't, they don't think their vote matters. And I think that we need to demonstrate to them that absolutely it does.
Thank you. I believe both of you have served on several city commissions and boards, and the question is, what has your attendance been like? And also, have you attended current city council meetings?
I have missed one meeting of the Capital Area District Library Board. And on those, typically we have two a month. And sometimes I've got extra ones because I'm on the committee that's looking into what to do as far as the building is concerned. And I missed that one for a different candidate forum. Was there, oh, do I go to council meetings? Yeah, I go to, not all of them, but a lot of them. I think it's important to be there. And you can watch it on TV, but it's not the same because you can kind of get a feel for who's talking to who behind the scenes. And I think it's very eye-opening.
Claire?
Thank you. So I was a big nerd as an AmeriCorps Vista, and I would go home with my roommate at the time, and we would watch city council on YouTube late into the night, 10:00, 11:00, whenever they were still going. And so definitely developed a little bit of a passion for participating on the YouTube link. I went to a city council meeting earlier this year and I just found that it was a little bit distracting for me to go as a candidate. And so I decided not to attend anymore, but that's just my personal choice to do that. I am proud to serve on the City of Lansing Arts and Culture Commission, and that was originally the mayor's arts and culture committee that started in 2018 when Mayor Shore took office. So at the time, there were 33 participants that were across not just the county, but like the region, and were all experts in arts and culture across their fields, right? That went from obviously pre-pandemic to post-pandemic. I was proud to serve as the chair, the co-chair of that body when we transitioned to the Lansing Arts and Culture Commission, which is a permanent city board, which was a very interesting process to be a part of. And unfortunately, you know, we don't really have someone on council to really champion or empower us to move forward, to have, you know, a strong voice to say like, these are our priorities as an Arts and Culture Commission. And so there were people that had to drop the commission, there were people that were unable to attend meetings regularly, and a lot of times, we weren't even really able to have quorum. So I think that there were moments in time over the transition of the last eight years of being involved in that board, you know? We've seen a lot of ups and downs, and I think that the best thing that we could have is someone that would champion the arts and culture sector on council.
Thank you. And you get this one first, Claire. What would you do to increase employment opportunities and incentivize and incentivize companies to actively hire our Lansing residents?
That's great. You know, I think that something that I've also learned from my friend and my mentor, former Mayor Hollister, is to bring people in from a variety of different sectors and workforces, right? That maybe you don't fully understand, or maybe you don't necessarily see eye to eye on, right? In the process of like keeping GM here, right, in the '90s, I think that there were a lot of conversations, obviously, I'm not privy to what they were, but about like the push and pull of why to stay and why to invest. And I think that we find ourselves in a similar situation today, right? Like, why Lansing? Why should my company stay here? Why should I have employees that are gonna work here? What should I pay them? And in a way, I see a path forward through the trades, through unions. As a union member, I think that there's an opportunity to empower, you know, organized labor to ensure that we have, you know, strong jobs so people can stay here. With regards to other kinds of jobs and different, you know, workforces and sectors, I'm gonna turn to those people that are within those. I'm in public school, I'm in education. I have my BFA in dance and my master's in social work. So my job is a little specific to where I'm at, but I'm open to understanding what do people need in order to feel like they need to keep their company here so we can offer people strong, paying jobs so they stay and they contribute to our community.
Thank you. Julie?
Dorothy, could you please repeat the question?
Sure. What would you do to increase employment opportunities and incentivize companies to actively hire Lansing, open positions in Lansing?
So I think it's important that we don't put all our eggs in one basket. I think what Clara was alluding to, you know, with GM, this is a GM town, and I think we need, we cannot tie ourselves so closely to one industry that if they decide they wanna pick up and leave, that it's gonna ruin things here in the city. As far as incentivizing folks to bring their businesses to Lansing, I think if we can make this, I've heard a lot of people complaining about parking downtown. I think a concrete thing that we could do to get businesses to flourish downtown and to be successful there would be some kind of a 20-minute free parking so you can run into the peanut shop. You can get your malted milk balls or your sour balls or whatever it is that, I think that that's part of it. I also wanna caution us against building a city around cars. I know, again, it's a GM town, and anytime I talk about walkability and bikability, there's people that, I'm not trying to take your car away, but there's young people that can't afford a car. I think the more that we can do to make the city more walkable, more bikeable, and increase and encourage the use of public transit, that's gonna make it a more attractive city, and that's gonna help employers want to be here as well.
Thank you. Another audience question is, what does being an active council member look like to you? So describe what the perfect active council member looks like.
A cross between Ryan Kost and Carol Wood. And that's what I would like to be. I don't know if you want me to say more about that. responsiveness and showing up. And if I gotta take a shovel and go to the drain out in the street, I will do it. I do it already, and I will happy to be, happy to be doing things like that.
Thank you. So I think that, what does that look like? To me, there are two facets of that, right? There's the day-to-day, obviously, going to meetings, going to different events around town, engaging with a variety of different constituents, engaging with a variety of different stakeholders and community organizations. So it sounds like a busy time. But the other piece of that is having a vision and being willing to collaborate in that vision, right? It's not just about what that particular individual wants. I think that that's why running for office is an amazing experience. You all should do it, because it really forces you to get clear about what your values are. And we don't have to have the same exact detailed vision of what we want to see happen, but if we can find a shared value that we have in common, then we can build a vision to move forward together. So I think in the day-to-day, obviously, you're participating and listening and showing up in a variety of different ways. And then on the other end of that, it's having the desire to have a vision that is collaborative in nature.
Thank you. And this is our last question from the audience. It's been touched on lightly, but I do wanna read this question. What will you do to assure we have an ADA transition plan, a full-time ADA coordinator, and to make and/or make sure that temporary housing is ADA compliant? And you get that first, Claire.
Sure. I have a feeling this is more in your wheelhouse for a specific answer. But I think in the short is to do exactly that. I'm not an expert in ADA compliance, so I'm gonna turn to the folks that best understand that and empower them to lead us forward to get those things done. That's kind of my short answer. In the long term, or in the longer version of that process, I think better understanding how to do that. Part of being a macro social worker is you're sort of a generalist, so I don't necessarily know all the ins and outs of specific policies of what needs to be done at each step along the way. But I'm here to help navigate a system. And I'm happy to serve as a guide within that. And then for those that are involved in a specific, you know, thing, such as like ADA compliance, I'm gonna turn to those folks that best understand how to get us there.
Thank you. And Julie?
I think it's just a matter of prioritizing this, deciding that it's important, deciding that we should not be letting our neighbors fall through the cracks in the way that they have the city is letting happen. I think, I agree with Clara, that absolutely there are folks that are experiencing disability. They were kind enough to put a panel together at The Fledge on Sunday, and I was there along with some of the other, the second ward candidate and a fourth ward candidate and one of the mayoral candidates. Folks are very, very willing to tell us what they need. All we have to do is listen. And, you know, if we get that money that you were telling me I could spend if I can get the incremental income tax, I think we could use some of that there as well. As far as making sure that housing is accessible, I don't think it would be off-base to require a certain percentage of all new housing that is built in Lansing is accessible. And I probably would not mind if that percentage was 100, because we are so far behind right now in terms of what accessible housing is available for folks in Lansing.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our official questions. If you still have a question for candidates when we're done, I think both candidates are more than willing to stay, and feel free to come and talk with them. And now we're going to do closing arguments, or closing arguments.
Whoa.
Sorry. Closing statements, and Claire, you get to go first, and you have one minute for your closing statement.
Okay, thank you. So again, my name is Clara Martinez. I'm the dance teacher, public school teacher down at Everett High School. I'm a proud union member, and I was, you know, really inspired to run because of my students. So I wanna ensure that we have opportunities for our young people after high school, whether that's through higher education, through the skilled trades, or through entrepreneurship. I wanna make sure that we have safe and reliable city service, safe and healthy neighborhoods and then reliable city services. And I hope to earn your vote as one of the two at-large council members, because I really wanna work collaboratively with others and ensure that we're all treated with dignity and respect, and we're able to move the city forward with a shared and collaborative vision.
Thank you very much. Julie, you have one minute for your closing statement.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. I really appreciate you all being here. It is delightful to see so many people that are engaged with this process. I'm Julie Vanaboom. I am the grassroots candidate running for at-large city council. I bring a lens of compassion, respect, and empathy. I am a common sense individual, and I am an independent thinker. I can see several sides of any issue. And I would like to represent the people of Lansing. I don't wanna represent the developers and the corporations.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to offer you the opportunity to thank our candidates for being here. And I'll turn this back over to Joanne McLean.
All right, so thank you so much for being here. And this concludes our candidate forum for the Lansing City Council at Large. The Lansing League and the Allen Neighborhood Center wanted to thank you, thank the candidates for their participation, and all of you for attending. On the back table, you'll find election and league information. Some of the candidates, either, the candidates may have brought campaign material. If so, they can bring it out after the forum and share that with you. And if you have any questions for the candidates, feel free. They have time here to, I think they'll give you a little time if you wanna talk to them personally. If you want further information on these candidates, as I said earlier, go to Vote411. You just Google it, put in your address, and you'll see what's on your ballot, and you'll see what the candidates had to say about some of the questions. And just please remember to vote in the general election on November 4th. Together, we will make democracy work. Thank you again for coming.